I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you just one more time and thank you so much for this little town, this little town we work with and work for. You have to be with us tonight and to have us make the right decisions for the right way, at the right time, and the right reason. Just be with us, lead, guide, or conversation in the name of Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Sandy Rolco?
Dan Swafford?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
All right. I entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for the executive session in the regular meeting, February 24th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Entertain a motion for accounts payable vouchers?
Some moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. First up, on resolutions, Resolution 05-2020, Preliminary Economic Revitalization Areas Resolution. It's a mouthful.
All right. Good evening. This would be the first of, well, normally two resolutions for a tax abatement. In this case, there's going to be several next meeting should you approve this one. The Preliminary Economic Revitalization Area Resolution simply designates an area as being eligible for a tax abatement. It doesn't cause a town to issue a tax abatement at this time. You do that at the second meeting, and there'll be two resolutions, one for personal property, one for real property, and a couple other side things, and I think one we'll talk about later. So at this time, what we're asking for is approval to designate the Kehe property as an economic revitalization area, and I can answer any questions on the specifics of the abatement. Just sent out, it's a five-year abatement, 100%, 80%, 60%, 40%, 20% the last year, for both real and personal property.
Any counsel comment on this, questions? Seeing none? Is there any public comment? Okay, so are we voting on this then, today?
Yes.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion?
Wait a minute, I think I have a question if we can.
Sure.
So Darla, we had discussed at one point, and maybe this is not the appropriate portion of this ordinance and our resolution to do it, of some payments in lieu of taxes even when we were abating some of the taxes. Is that at a later point, or is that?
That is, that's an agreement that's tied to this, that's later on in the agenda. It was, it's not going to be in the resolution due to some Darla reasons, so I'll let her explain.
I drafted a proposed economic, um, sorry, economic development agreement between the town, Kehe, and Skanel Properties, and that is on the agenda later tonight under new business.
Okay.
And so by passing this resolution tonight, Scott, it's just the preliminary resolution, and at the town council meeting on the 23rd, the council has the opportunity to reaffirm it, modify it, or rescind it.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we weren't.
Right. You're not locking yourselves in, but what you're doing is you're preliminarily passing the resolution so that Kevin can get notice in the paper, and then the public hearing portion is at the next council meeting on the 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion?
I'd move we approve Resolution 05-2020, the Preliminary Economic Revitalization Area Resolution for the Kehe property.
Second.
Sandy Rolco?
Who was the second?
I was.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance on first reading, 2016, to add roundabout traffic section of the Elsville Town Code. Roundabout to the traffic. Kevin?
Is this you?
Hmm?
We just, I did it.
Sure.
We just have a roundabout, and it's never been marked or anything, and we've been getting complaints that people's about to have an accident in it, so, you know, it needs to be marked the direction you need to go.
Where's it at anyway?
It's on Raymond Run and Impatience.
So we're lit in the states?
It's really a, it's a mini roundabout, it's not.
Right north of Regal Road, this is full right straight north, and run right into it, so. There's two, I think.
Hopefully, we won't run into it.
I think the issue is two of the entrances to the roundabout are marked with a stop sign, and two are marked with a yield sign, and that's where the confusion's coming in. So the goal of this, hopefully, with my ordinance, is to make it clear that all entrances to the roundabout are marked with a yield sign, so.
Okay. Any other counsel comment, questions, concerns? Public? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
No, this is first reading.
Oh, first reading, sorry. I got the check mark wrong there. Okay, let's move on to ordinance on the second reading, Ordinance 2020-15, to replace Section 150 of the Elsville Town Code regarding building, department, building commissioner, and building codes.
I'm still waiting to hear back from the state on our first draft, so I would ask for this to be tabled, unless you have any questions right now. I can answer those, but otherwise, I don't want to have this approved and then have to reapprove it because I asked for something to be changed.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions first? Seeing none, I move we table ordinance 20-20, or 2020-15?
Some moved.
Our second?
Second, sorry.
That's all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, jump down to new business, agreement between the town of Elsville and Indiana University Health, Bloomington, ambulance staffing.
This is the agreement that we have between IU Health and the town of Elsville, that we provide a backup ambulance service for the county. Something we've done since 2001. This money is budgeted for miscellaneous revenues coming into the town, and so that's what we do. We keep the backup ambulance at the fire station on Curry Pike. This is what we've done, you know, for the last several years.
Okay. Any questions for Mike?
Mike has, what is the, I'm looking for it on the agenda, but, or in the packet, but what are we, has the, their share of what they're paying us gone up, down, where are we with?
For this year, it's exact same as last year.
Okay. And those funds are used for miscellaneous funds that usually come in?
Yeah, that's a miscellaneous revenue goes in to the budget that basically funds a half of a part-time firefighter, so we can run the ambulance all the time.
How many runs to 218 make this year in comparison to the last?
2019, they made just about 250 calls. It's down from the previous year.
So it's down from the previous year?
Yes, it is. The IU Health has put on additional resources on the street, and that's relieved some of the pressure, but we've seen an uptick in the last three months, though, so I don't think those numbers are going to stay the same for the next year, so.
Year-to-date, do you know what your numbers are?
For the 218, no, I do not.
Any further comments from the council? Seeing none, any public comment? I'd entertain a motion?
Move we make the agreement between town of Elsville and Indiana University Health, Bloomington, for ambulance staffing.
Second.
Sandy Rolco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, agreement between the town of Elsville and VET Environmental Engineers LLC, Phase One Environmental Site Assessment at 104 West Vine Street.
Yes, I had asked Sandy if you could place this on the agenda. As everyone is aware, we have filed an eminent domain proceeding against Pipjay Properties, which owns 104 West Vine, and we are continuing to speak with that owner in the hopes of working out a resolution, but my suggestion was that the town go ahead and get started with a Phase One environmental, and that's what's in front of the council tonight, is a proposed contract with VET for a Phase One for 104 West Vine for $2,350.
How much was that?
$2,350.
All right, any counsel comment on this?
Guess the question is, is that if we contract with this, if we don't own the property, are we allowed to go on it to, to do a Phase One?
I have spoken to the folks at VET Environmental, and even though they cannot go on to the property, and their report will reflect that they can't go on to the property, they can look at the property from three sides. They will do research to see what the property has been used for, and can also speak with people who are knowledgeable about what the property has been used for to come up with a Phase One report.
Do you know what's the time on this?
Their turnaround time, I think they told me, is three to five weeks.
Okay. Any further counsel questions? Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy Rolco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to fire department, promotion of two part-time firefighters to full-time.
Good evening. We had an opening in the fire department. Firefighter Jason Webb asked to be put to part-time to go with other, other personal ventures and a private business world, so he done that. Also, the other person we'd like to bring forward tonight was a position that was created by the town council at last year's budget session and approved for the year 2020. The cash flows are adequate enough to go ahead and hire an additional person, according to Sandy, so I'm going to bring to you two people, and they are father and son. So the first one is Brian Mauder. Brian started out in 1988 as a volunteer firefighter in Coal City, graduate of Oland Valley High School in 1986. In 1989, he moved to Spencer and joined the Oland Valley Fire Department, where he had served nearly every capacity that a volunteer fire department has to offer. He also did one year as a stint as fire chief. He also did a stint as a fire chief at Coal City. Brian worked a GE plant in Bloomington for over 30 years. He's married, has two adult children. You'll see one here in just a second. He came to us as a part-timer in September 2018. He averages about 47 hours a week. He's a very active firefighter, adds a lot to our department. So that's the first person. I'd like to, he is here tonight. Went and stand up Brian, show mine, so. The other one is Tyler Mauder. He started out as a volunteer firefighter with Oland Valley Fire Department, 2016, a graduate of Oland Valley High School in 2017. He currently lives in Spencer. He joined our department as a volunteer in 2017 and promoted himself up to part-time. He's a graduate of Benson's University with an associate's degree in applied fire science, currently enrolled in Columbia Southern for fire service administration. He's also a firefighter part-time presently at White River Fire Protection District in Johnson County, so. He became part-time with us in August of, August 17. So we did a testing process for six candidates, and we interviewed three. Counsel member Pam Sample sat in on the interview process, and the names we bring to you tonight are Brian Mauder and Tyler, and Tyler Mauder.
All right. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Hey, Mike. Mike, I think. Thank you. All right, let's move into the discussion of the economic development agreement between the town of Elsville and Kehe.
All right, this is tied to the tax abatement request for Kehe. Some of you may be asking why we're even considering a tax abatement request for a building that's already under construction. The answer to that is, in return, they have offered to fund a, or the equivalent of a full-time firefighter for four years and at $75,000 each year, and then another $50,000 for the fifth year to coincide with their tax abatement period, and to provide an access easement of about 60 feet wide along the east property line of where they're building that will, should the properties behind their development endpoint in future would then have access to State Road 46 instead of having to use Starnes.
Any counsel comments on this, questions?
And again, this is not to be voted on. I wanted this to be on the calendar or on the agenda so the council could take a look at it, and I have forwarded this document to the representatives at Kehe and Skanel Properties, who signed their SB 1 forms. So when this boomerangs back to you, it may look a little different than what it looks here. This is my draft, my ideas, but counsel for, the companies have not had a chance to look at it and get back to me, so.
But do we have an agreement in principle, broadly?
Yes.
They're indicated they are good with the terms that we've talked about.
Well, I think, you asked for comments, this is much the same as what we've done with the police department in cooperation with school corporation, adding officers to fill a role that was needed there. Kehe clearly has a sizable building under construction. The fire department clearly needs more officers that we just simply cannot afford otherwise, so I think this more than makes sense and is both an equitable use of the economic development agreements, but also goes to show how, how much Kehe's going to put forward to be a solid member of the community.
Any other counsel comments, questions? What was the, so we're doing this in like lieu of taxes for five years or four years?
Five years.
Five years?
Five, yeah. The first four years are, would be at $75,000, the fifth year would be $50,000 because their abatement's going to drop down quite a bit.
And so this money will be sent to the, the town general fund to be dispersed to the fire department? And it's a full-time firefighter, Mike, is that?
I believe that what's written is firefighting personnel.
Okay. So it will go into your budget?
Well, it'll go into general fund, and I would have to do an additional appropriation and create a new line within the budget, so.
Which is what we did with the SROs for the PD coming from the school corporation grants.
Okay. Any other further questions? Any public comment, question? All right. So we, we will not vote on this, right, until?
Correct. It will be on, hopefully, it will be on the agenda for the 23rd.
Okay, for the 23rd.
So that you can look at that in conjunction with the confirming resolution for the economic revitalization area designation.
Okay. All right, let's go to privilege of the floor. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any non-agenda items?
Good evening. I'm Lisa Cisco. I'm president of Elsville Main Street, and as most of you will recall, that in February, Elsville had a flooding scare, and I have. I'm sorry? I've been in touch with at least three businesses that were addressing their flood insurance concerns, and it is a concern that business people can't forget. They address the situation, they commit monies, so if something does happen, they can try to recover money, but as you know, a lot with insurance, you don't get, always get restored back to 100%, and oftentimes, the sentimental losses can never be recovered. And I know that Elsville has been talking about help, trying to resolve the flooding issue, and have worked hard for many years on this, and I know it's been talked about recently on what a good solution might be as a more permanent solution. So I just wanted to, to bring it up again, that I've witnessed firsthand, which is, was interesting when we were watching the creek rise, and I give accolades for the town employees that probably, that went above and beyond the call of duty to watch and monitor what was happening with the water in the creek, to see that if it was going to be an actual flood, that they were there to help businesses, and they did preparation ahead of time with barricades and sandbags and so forth, so want to say thank you very much to those employees for what they do all the time, and maybe is taken for granted sometimes by people who aren't aware and have to deal with the flood on an ongoing basis. So I just want to encourage you to help us to find a bigger solution, and with that, I want to acknowledge that Indiana Main Street is like above us as far as Elsville Main Street, and then there's the national charter for main streets across the country. And they give us a, models of what to do, to how to operate our organization, and they ask us questions of what our priorities for funding would be. Not every town has a creek that floods, so we are kind of unique in that. We have identified that flooding is a concern for our main street organization, and we're looking for the state and the federal government for assistance. If there's grants that come along the way, that we'd be more than happy to be a lead or a partner organization to help try to garner funds for the town, to help make the flooding be more contained, if you will, down the road. So want to thank you for all that you do. Secondly, I want to give you a little bit of an update on the Envision Elsville project. As many of you probably already know, that the Elsville Chamber, Elsville Greater Area Chamber of Commerce and Elsville Main Street have embarked on a joint project. We want to build on the work that Kevin Tilotti and others have done as far as a comprehensive plan and identifying issues for the town of Elsville. We want to go a little bit deeper and talk to all of the stakeholders in our community about what are the concerns that we have and how we want to see our community develop in the next few years. So we're excited about that. We signed our contract with the Bloomington, I should say this, the Community Foundation of Bloomington Monroe County for $30,000. That's a, gives us a good start. We think the project's going to take us, cost us about $55,000. So we'll be doing some fundraising in the next few weeks, and we're putting out a request for proposals for other professionals that have done envisioning projects like this, and we'll be asking for your participation, as well as everybody who calls Elsville their community, to be a part of it, and then we plan that we'll be wrapped up and give a presentation at the end, which we hope would be by April 30th of next year, so that we'll have some strategic plans that we think will be beneficial for Elsville. And as we started talking about this, I come across a Bloomberg magazine, and one of the articles was about the town next door, Spencer. They did an envisioning project one year, and the next year, they garnered $500,000. And I thought, wow, if Elsville could do that, if we go through this visioning process and then can leverage more grant money for the community to address the things that we would like to see happen, that would be a wonderful outcome. And so we're working hard on that end, and thank everybody in advance for being a participant in Envision Elsville. And with that, I just want to thank you again for all that you do and taking care of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. And are you going to pass the hat for the $25,000 now, or that Envision Elsville needs?
Oh, pass the hat?
Yes.
Mike, where's the hat?
If only you had a hat, right?
Town marshal, do you have your hat tonight? Okay, well, oh, I see, I do see a hat.
Hey, Lisa, on the way in here today, I seen at the trail there that there was some limestone carvings. Is that Main Street, or?
Yes, it is. We had an anonymous donor give us $10,000 to embark on a project. We, if you've walked on the trail, or if you've driven by and you see these column segments that are sticking up out of the ground, but they look a little unfinished, it's because they are. We didn't have the funds to finish that when the trail was first built. So with this anonymous donation, we worked with Indiana Limestone Fabricators, Brad Mobley, and fabricated the capitals or the, the tops, the hats, to these segments. And we see it as an education project, because when kids come along, they can see that there's the Dorian, Ionic, and Corinthian capitals. If you go to Washington DC or some older communities, you will see those capitals used throughout the country. So we want to show the kids what they look like, let them get, be close enough that they can be a little bit more hands-on, and we already have on the informational stand nearby, it talks about what those capitals are, so we're really excited about that. It's been some time since those segments were put in place, and the tops are done. They're stored on the parking lot, and Mike Farmer and some others from the town are helping us to get those installed professionally, and then we're going to have a big celebration for that, and also the parking lot, if you, if you haven't had a chance to see the parking lot, the main work has been done. We're going to be doing some other treatments to it, placing some limestone structures and some signage there, but yes, that, those capital, those limestone pieces were done on purpose, and they're very precious to us.
They look very nice from what I could see without stopping, so.
Yes, just wait till you see them on the, on the capitals, and you can see, driving down Temperance, if you look over to the left, you can see those columns, so they were purposefully put there toward the middle of the trail to be a focal point for everybody who comes to Elsville.
Great, great. Looking forward to seeing it. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome. And may I add, I, we're, we'll be having an annual meeting coming up in April sometime, and we hope to have someone from Spencer to talk about their visioning project. We thought that might be a good teaser, to learn a little bit more how that community, who has some similar interests and goals and challenges as we do, how they went through their process, and how they garnered the money, and what they're planning to do with it and for future development. And they've been working with Okra, which is the state organization that helps us with revitalization projects, and it was suggested that Elsville and Spencer work together on some grant opportunities down the road. So we'll see what comes of that, and if we can leverage money for the community, we'll be more than happy to work on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll take a spot on the privilege of the floor. Michael Farmer. Just remind everybody, we're in the middle of our Big Hearts Campaign for Funding for the Boys and Girls Club. The luncheon will be here on April the 17th, if any of the board members would like to attend. Give me a call, and I'll make sure you have a seat at the table. It's pretty inspiring, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knew, we're looking for people to support the Boys and Girls Club, and if you have any questions or you'd like to help, get ahold of me. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none, we'll jump down to supervisor's comment. Who wants to go first? Nobody?
Oh, just a heads up, we're.
There we go.
Planning a memorial service. It'll be a little early this year, I think. The memorial service is like the 23rd or 24th, something like that, so. I was going to hit Lisa up for Main Street to help again this year, but I'll just go make a couple here now, so if you can do that, we really appreciate that. with Pupple here now, so if you can do that, we really appreciate that, so.
Okay.
I think that's about it for me.
Great.
I started the process of the additional preparation, so the ad will be in the journal, not this week, but next, for the RSO money we received and for the extra public safety distribution we received, so that we can spend those funds. $50,000 for one and $60,000. Mike, what's your total?
Six months, sixty, it's lower than sixty.
All right. I'll go last.
Sure.
Okay. I just want to let the board know that once again this year, we're going to be talking to the food truck people about Food Truck Wednesday. We're thinking about moving it to Thursday. And I'd like some input from the board on that. I think that the town's going to take the lead on organizing the event and deciding who can or can't show up. And so we want to be engaged. We think we can provide the leadership I do not think we had last year. So nothing against the food truck people, but they have other concerns and so I just want to let you know so you can give me a call and ask me about it. Another thing that's happening, talked to NDOT today and there's a couple of things that I'd been asked to ask NDOT and one of them was the speed limits west of town, basically from here, west of town. And so they're going to look into the speed limits and see if they need some adjustment based on traffic flows, businesses that are propping up along the corridor. And specifically Smithville asked me to have NDOT come and do a survey and see if they need to be adjusted. So any questions about that, let me know. Also, I asked NDOT if we could take control of the maintenance of what I consider the gateway into town at Arlington and 46. It's in disrepair and it just looks like, well, if it was into town limits, we'd have fined them last year. And so they only mow twice a year and that's too important of an entryway for the town. And when we're talking about quality of place and aesthetics for the town, it's a good place to start. So we're working on a maintenance agreement for that.
Great.
I will ask, when you talk about the speed limit, is, are they wanting it higher or lower?
Lower.
Okay.
What's the current speed limit right now?
Well, what happens is, as you go by the town hall and the police department, it goes from 35 to 45 within 500 feet. And so the corporate offices of Smithville, they have a hard time getting out into the traffic and they just wanted to know if something could be done where they could extend the 35 mile an hour out past, out past their corporate office. I went out today and looked at the highway and I couldn't find speed limit signs outside of town, so it's, I'm not sure if it's 50, 55, 45. And so some signage and some consideration for Kehe who's moving into town in the big trucks and the Boys and Girls Club right next door and Smithville with 200 employees that go in and out of their maintenance building every day. And anticipated projects that are going in on the Harmon Farm, maybe it's a good time to extend the milder speed limits out of town. And I realize that there's some irony about me asking for people to slow down, but I think it's warranted, so.
All right. Anything else? Seeing none, we go to council comment?
I do have some to make. As you, probably unless you've not opened the paper, been on Facebook in the last two months or so, there is a proposal that the mayor of Bloomington's talking about to increase the local income tax by 0.5%. Hello? Okay, sorry. By 0.5%. The way that the law is set up for that, is the mayor here? Is this? I don't know what's going on here, sorry. But the way that is set up, right now, with a five to four majority in the city council, that tax can be levied countywide. So basically, our votes on the town council in Elsville do not matter and the same with the votes on the town, the county council. Now, I don't know about you guys, but none of us have any representation in the city, the ones that live in Elsville or live in the unincorporated areas. So one of the things it's been working on is sending a message to the state of Indiana. They're working on some language that would change that a little bit. They're wanting to push it off another couple of years, but this tax will be enacted by then if it's not changed. And the other thing that a lot of my constituents have asked and other people from Els, other people from, okay. Other people from Elsville have asked, is that we go on record kind of, you know, if we support the way this is handled, the way this tax is. And I've also invited my fellow council people to, I have to say for the record, this is getting annoying, have to, and go on record to see if, if they would support an increase in the local income tax. I can say for myself, I do not like the way this is being handled. I believe in representative democracy. I believe that we should have a vote if anything taxes levied on us. This tax would hurt the poorest of the poor in the town of Elsville. Sorry about that. Thank you. All right. I said this tax would hurt the poorest and the poor in the town of Elsville. If you make four, I think $40,000, $50,000 a year, I, the calculations would be, you know, a hundred bucks a month or something like that, extra in income tax. Maybe wrong on the exact numbers, but it's close. And what I think is hurtful about this, I don't really care what Bloomington is wanting to raise the tax for, but in Elsville, we don't need to raise taxes to get our job done. We don't want this, I don't want this tax and I, the town, I mean, maybe if the residents all want a half a percentage tax, that's one thing. But I'll speak for myself. I don't, I'm concerned about those that are, that can't afford this tax. And the best way to help them afford things is to keep more money in their pocket and to make, help businesses and their employees keep more money in their pocket. Because the average person working a little bit above minimum wage, 10 or 12 hour, $10 to $12 an hour, would have to work an extra three hours a week to make up for this tax. I don't want to see that to anybody. That's a lot of time away from their family or doing something else. So I wanted to go on record to make a clear statement that I do not support this tax and also I do not support the way it is levied because we do not have proper representation on that. And I encourage every one of my other council members to do as they wish.
Thank you, Scott. William, I'm sorry. I would like to say too, I think it's, it's a great that you go to the public meetings they have and I'm not sure when the next one is, but I think it's like the 24th. Is it this Wednesday? You know, people need to get out there and show that the public, we're not interested in that tax and, and as far as me, I do not support it one bit either, so. Any other council comments?
I don't support it either. I don't think we need to bring more taxes on people here in Elsville. If the mayor wants to do it for the city of Bloomington, we can help that. But I think we as council members need to look out for taxpayers and realize that not everyone lives on money. We have a lot of people that's on social security. My household for one is living on social security for my husband. It, to me, it will hurt people like that. I look out for the taxpayers and no, we do not need no more taxes. We need to be able to control our own affairs here in Elsville and not let the mayor of Bloomington control them.
Thank you.
I think the biggest problem, and William and I talked about this earlier, is the way the actual, not so much the tax, but the way the system is set. When we went, and for those of you guys who take you back in history for a little bit, the local option income tax that we're currently using, the latest one was public, for public safety. That actually originated here with Elsville and then moved to the county council and then moved to the city council. Because the way the law is set, the income tax board is made up of the three bodies, with Steinsville having a representative to, but not a voting member of. And I think that's part of the biggest kind of disparity, as William and I talked about this, is not necessarily the idea of the tax, not necessarily the tax itself, which people will have different ideas on, it's, it's how that tax could potentially be ratified. And that is a all or nothing vote per the individual member bodies of the income tax board, which again would be the Elsville Town Council, the Monroe County Council, and the Bloomington Common Council. Each of the votes, if we were to vote for it, is not five votes. Elsville has five votes determined by the majority of this group. So if three of us voted, Elsville's five votes would go however three voted. What is being proposed at the state house now is a little more equitable in the fact that it is one vote per representative. So in this case, there would be one vote for each of the five members here, there'd be seven votes for each of the members of the Monroe County Council, there'd be nine votes for each of the city council. And in total, whatever the majority is of those bodies would then ratify it or not ratify it. And I think that's probably what we need to effort as much or more than any tax, is the way that it's implemented. With public safety lit, it was unanimous for all three boards. There was no dissension, so it really didn't come into effect. This one clearly has some dissension involved in it, whether it be for members of this board, the county council, or the city council, and that points out the overall flaw in the system with local option income taxes, where one body essentially controls the rest. So I would urge the state legislature to do something with that and make it more equitable because it's not just this tax by itself. It's other things that will happen in the future from here on out that are ratified by the income tax board, which again, is all of us, all, what, 21 of us. So that needs to be an equitable thing across the board, not necessarily how it's done now.
Yeah, and I'd like to go on record, also, I do not support the tax. When are we expecting a decision on this?
The mayor has stated he wants this passed by June. And I was on the radio with him Friday and he said that one of the things I asked him directly is that the state wants more time to consider this. Can you postpone it until? He said absolutely not. Climate change is too much of an urgency, so we really do need to get this passed. So sooner rather than later. I think it's just a matter of them having their public meetings and, but keep in mind, on the public meetings, I have not seen anything where there's a discussion of not having it. It's what do we want to do with the money? So that seems to be the gist of the public meetings. It's important to go there. It has to be a conspiracy here. It really does. I guess, I guess the, the powers that be are saying, you've talked too much, William.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any, any other comment? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.